I'd like to call to order the City of Sagatuck City Council Meeting for Monday, March 11th. If you could all please join me for the standing.
Pledge of Independence to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the clerk could please call the roll.
Anderson, here.
Baldwin.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Muncie.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
White.
Here.
Do you have a form? If I could have a motion to excuse Councilmember Gardner, he had a prior engagement tonight.
Motion to excuse Councilmember Gardner from tonight's meeting. A second.
Okay, all those in favor say yes.
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 Opposed? Okay, all right, so on to Mayor's comments tonight. Thank you all for being here, first of all. I just wanted to have another round of thank yous to our Planning Commission and to Ryan Cummins, our Planning and Zoning Administrator. We have several items on the agenda tonight as we continue to work through our short-term rental ordinances, all while Ryan continues his interim position as City Manager. So, thank you for the extra efforts and the long hours involved. Jamie sent out a note today about our Community Build Project. I don't want to take away from the PPW's work, but I did want to mention that that has gone out. It's happening April 15th through the 17th, and there is a place where people can sign up. So, that's already out there, and I hope everybody rolls up their sleeves and gets involved in this way, because I think it'll be a fun project that'll bring the community together. Department of Public Works, I know you guys have been doing some tree trimming. That was fantastic. It's been, you know, decent weather for us to be able to get a lot of that stuff done. And then I also noticed that our spring brush cleanup and leaf pickup is already happening. So, spring is in the air, and we appreciate all of your efforts. You guys are working hard there, and the fact that spring is here, we know the season is almost upon us. And then I just finally just want to say a note of gratitude to my fellow council members and all of our board members in our community. We are all volunteers, and I appreciate how civil many of our discussions have been, and not only with each other, but with the community as well. We've had a lot of great discussions that have gone on. We may disagree with a lot of these policies that have come before us, but I appreciate the constructive, you know, the constructive criticism that we've had from the community that has helped us improve our community. I want to just keep improving and make this city even better. It's an incredible community, and I appreciate everyone just being civil and constructive in our work that we do as volunteers here. So, with that being said, City Managers' comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to share a point of good news that we received later this afternoon. The City and your Department of Public Works and Engineering touched on this at your workshop meeting that we had applied for a technical managerial and financial grant from Eagle to do a final systems inventory on our lead service lines. That's a requirement of the state that we have to have done this year. And so, we were successful in obtaining a grant amount of $221,600 for that work, which is going to, it's costly work, as you can tell, and so to receive grant dollars to do, you know, to take a look at those lead service lines is huge. So, I wanted to share that good piece of good news with you this afternoon.
Fantastic, all right. Any agenda changes, additions or deletions? Okay, any guest speakers tonight? All right, all right, so it's time for public comment on agenda items only. If you could come to the podium, if you're in the room, state your first and last name and where you live.
Dan Fox, City of Sagatuck, up on the hill, the other hill, the north hill. This will be quick, I hope. It's regarding Agenda Item 15F on the search. Search for the next City Manager. And it's, as I say, it's a quick comment. I noticed the Wall Firm is what's on the agenda to be approved, but I didn't see any evidence that there had been any attention given to competitive bidding. I mean, the city competitively bids when you sell a used dump truck. So, and maybe you did, and if you did, that's great, and I don't need an answer. But I'm curious whether you investigated the Michigan Municipal League, which offers that exact service, and the city is a member of the municipal league. And I think there's a discount. I don't think it's a, honestly, it's probably pretty much apples to apples from what I could tell with a quick read. But they're a legitimate source, and they got like, like all those firms, I guess, or most of those firms, they got a list as long as your arm of cities they've worked with and so forth. In any case, I offer that for whatever it's worth. But in a related, kind of related, I guess, I want to speak for just a second, and you probably know, from the Mayor's comments, I think this relates to some of that. You probably know that a lot of people in town are talking a lot, a lot, with a lot of opinions regarding what I'll term the recent City Manager transition. And some fairly outlandish things are being said, at least I think they're outlandish. Some sounded outlandish to me, and I have a pretty high tolerance for outlandish. But, and I think, I know, like, public relations sort of 101. In the absence of facts, the rumors will take hold, and they're just going to keep going. They're just going to keep going and maybe get worse and more outlandish. And there's been, honestly, in my view, and I think a lot of people's view, sort of a dearth of facts coming out. And I think I know the reason for that has to do with privacy and concerns of that nature. And I understand that, and I am empathetic toward it. However, not everything regarding that transition is subject to that kind of privacy. And as it stands right now, very little of what might be released has been released. So, the answer to killing rumors is more facts. It's always been that way. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Richard Williams, 1050 Elizabeth Street. I'd like to address a couple matters, one with short-term rental matters and Item 12. Let's examine escalating costs burdening taxpayers. Council proposes a staggering 448% fee increase for a group of taxpayers not benefiting from the PRI, thus shouldering more property taxes for a school district with only 7% enrollment from city residents, but accommodating 41% enrollment from out-of-district students. This was information I gathered from the Superintendent's Office last April. While Ms. Baldwin contends that STRs are subsidized by the Sagatuck City community, it's crucial to note that short-term rentals have individually higher property taxes and contribute more to the community than equivalent properties claiming PRI. Moreover, let's scrutinize the significant and questionable expenses outlined in this month's ledger, Item 12. An $11,147 expense is for legal fees employment, with an additional expense of $844 for legal fees manager. Furthermore, training expenses totaling $9,654 under the account election, training, and supplies raise concerns. But these expenses include costs related to the Michigan Municipal Executive's Winter Institute, where Ryan Heiss was listed as a presenter. Has the council received a formal recap of this taxpayer-funded professional development event from the city's attendee? Could incidents at the institute have violated Section 11.11 of the city's personnel policies and procedures? Regardless of the hidden details, my family's portion of the ordered manager buyout exceeds $250. $250, adding yet another unnecessary tax burden. It's evident that there's a neglect of duty within this chamber. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else?
747 Water Street. I'm here today because I'm concerned about the amount of monies this board is spending on attorneys and paying an employee who walked off his job. I've never paid an employee that kind of money to walk off their job and leave the city unattended. So, that concerns me. The other thing is, I hope that this council takes however long it takes to find a City Manager that can come here, that has years of experience, both in leadership and experience, being a manager of a city, so we could possibly learn from that new manager what he can bring to us. So, those are my main concerns. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Laura. Anyone else in the room? Okay, we can go online. See Gary Kemp. If you could unmute yourself, state your name and where you live.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, my name is Gary Kemp. I live at 1022 Holland Street in Sagatuck, and I own a couple of STRs. And I'm very upset with the proposed increase in the fees from basically 450%, as it was just identified, from $525 for three years to $1,575 for three years. First of all, I looked at the analysis that was done, and we don't really know the cost that are going to be accrued to this program. And the original intent was to start small, learn as we went along, increase the fees as we learned more and knew more what to do, instead of having everything start at the most complex level and go backwards. My analysis says that the people who don't cause the problems, which I consider myself, after 20-some years of renting, I've never had any kind of problems with the city or with renters, that my totals would come up to like $250 for three years for people who follow the rules versus the 530 for people, or 525 for people who don't. Anyway, I think we should look at fees on a little different basis and look at them on the basis of trying to be positive and accomplish what we set out to do. We could construct fees which decrease over time for STRs who have no problems. You could come up with fees that are based on a weighted scale, for instance, to take into account property size, number of rooms, or occupants, onsite parking, years without problems, et cetera. We could even lower fees for city resident owners who are here to deal with the problems. And so, I think more work needs to be done on those fees, because I think what's there are out of sight. Secondly, I am very concerned that this is going to have a negative impact on tourism. And I'll come back to that later after, but it has to do with the decrease in property values and the decrease in people's desire to have rentals offset some of the costs for their purchase of property, even though they don't live in the city, where they use it themselves, where they rent it, share the costs, lower their fee, their cost. I think it's, all of these things are going to lower the ability of the city to have a really inviting environment and effective tourism. And lastly, I wanted to make sure that everyone knew that I do not, I am really opposed to this new tax proposal that's, that's, you're looking at a resolution supporting. I hope you don't support that. It's, we're already paying, I think, a lot of taxes, and use tax.
Gary, your time is up.
CBV assessments, okay. And one last thing, all of these extra taxes are just going to discourage real estate investment and reduce tourism.
All right, Gary, thank you so much for your comments. Anyone else online who'd like to speak? Do I have any more hands raised?
No.
Okay, all right, that ends public comment. We're on to the Consent Agenda, page three of your packet. Our regular City Council Meeting minutes, updated agreement with Burna and Castor and PC for legal services and the right-of-way application. If I could have a motion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to pass our Consent Agenda for March 11, 2024.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and any discussion? All right, this is a roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, on to staff reports, boards, commissions, and committees. City Managers' report, Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have nothing in particular to highlight from my report, but happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Does anyone have any questions for Ryan? Okay, moving on to the Treasurer's Report, is Peter online? Or in the building?
I don't.
Okay.
He had a bit of a conflict tonight with the schedule, so.
All right. All right, back to you, Ryan, on the Planning and Zoning.
Again, Madam Mayor, nothing in particular to highlight unless you have any questions.
All right, anyone have any questions? Obviously, we have quite a few things on the agenda, so we'll go on to that. DPW, Scott? Scott doesn't have anything to add. Does anybody have any questions while Scott is here? All right, Scott, thanks so much. Anyone from the Sheriff's Department here?
Nothing to report.
Okay, anyone from the engineer, John Moxey? Okay, that's moving along quickly. We're moving on to Boards, Commissions, and Committees, Fire District Administration Board, Dan Fox.
You may get again. Want to apologize for not being here to make this report. And this is on the February 19th Fire Board Meeting. I was not here at your last meeting, but I didn't want you to think I just like blew you off for no reason. That was my reason.
I know.
Two weeks old in Cincinnati, and so that's where I went, spent that whole week down there being an extra pair of hands. But I do have highlights, highlights from that meeting to go over briefly. I also want to reiterate, the Fire District's website has a ton of stuff. I mean, I think more than anyone can really absorb, but it includes all the statistical reports, the monthly ones, and their deep addresses where the calls were made. I mean, it, it's a lot. So, I don't want to, I don't want to even try and capture pieces of that. I'd rather, if you have a question and you go there and you can't find the answer, we can get you the answer, but nine times out of 10, maybe 99 times out of 100, it's going to be there. And the latest stats for February just came in, they are posted there, I just checked. And the top line on that is that February's incident count was up by 16%. Now, these numbers move around month to month, but that's a relatively significant move. Other, from the, from the February 19th meeting, the chief reported on what I think are impressive cost recovery updates from three incidents out on 196, as you may know. The Fire District charges, there's set fees and rates for trucks, for people, for hours, and all the rest of that, usually billing insurance companies, because that's where it goes. We get stiffed on some of that, because you get out of area, people who will just rope-a-dopey or whatever. But in these three instances, I have the numbers in front of me, but it's just under $15,000. So, it's a real number that came back into our budget. The, we talked a little bit then, and subsequently, on the replacement of the truck that was totaled in the accident on Blue Star Highway, that was 2172. That's one of the two Ford expeditions that the EMTs used to respond. And it's done, probably roughly $20,000. We had hoped for more from the insurance company, but that looks like what it's going to be, going to be. As the, as the chief said, sometimes, you know, you actually can make lemonade out of lemons. That, both of those expeditions are getting up in years and distinctly up in miles. So, they're coming, they were coming closer, different model years, but they're coming, both were coming close. So, that, the loss of that one forces us to take action to replace it. And we've talked, the Fire District Board has talked over the, over the time I've been on there, off and on, and more recently, pretty consistently, about adding, and I've talked in this room, about adding basic life support, transportation capability to the, to the services that the Fire District offers. That means a cot in the back of the truck where someone, if, and it has happened embarrassingly number of times, when the response for a call to an ambulance is no ambulance available. And, which is, I mean, it's terrifying to hear it here. You can imagine if you're lying on a sidewalk someplace, like the guy was up the street here last summer, I think it was, that's a non-starter. Well, with what we had as equipment, the only option in those circumstances is to load somebody into the front seat of a vehicle. That opens up some liability issues, some other problems. So, this addresses that. We have the vehicle. They, they were able to locate a used piece of equipment in North Carolina. Two of the Fire District, one of whom is a diesel mechanic, certified diesel mechanic, went out to look at it. They had been authorized by the Fire Board, you can see it on the latest meeting, to spend a certain amount, no more than a certain amount. They actually beat that amount by $2,000. Truck is back here, the truck is being readied for service right now. It needs, it still needs, well, it's, I mean, it's fully equipped. It needs the cot, which is not an inexpensive item, believe it or not, they're like $10,000. It's very expensive, but we will manage that, the district will manage that. So, it's, it's really an exciting time. So, that vehicle will be available either to respond as a first-response EMT or in response to a request from a site. It also has the advantage, something I didn't know, fire, by, by regulation, the firefighters can only wear their breathing apparatus for an hour. And after that hour, they have to sit down and rest for an extended period of time. You think not a big deal, except when it's like 10 below, then it's a big deal. And for, for the Fire District, that meant they had to go like find one of the engines that's sitting out there and sit in the cab of a, of a truck. This takes care of that, it's called, they call it rehabilitation, believe it or not, but this takes care of that requirement too, which is kind of a bonus. So, we plan, when, when this thing comes into service, which I don't have a date, and I, and some things are dependent on other things happening, but when that happens, we will do an event at the fire station, so you can see. It's, it's a very impressive deal, I'm very, very pleased. Our next meeting, Fire Board's next meeting, is the 18th, so I think, whatever your next meeting comes after that, and I'll be back up with that meeting. If you have any questions, feel free.
Go ahead, Greg.
Just out of curiosity, of course, that truck was insured, and I know it's going to cost a lot more to replace it. But do you know how much that truck was insured for, or what we got for, what you guys got for that?
For the one that was damaged?
The one that was damaged?
We got roughly $20,000. It may have been 19 and high change, but I want to say $20,000.
Almost $20,000. And how much do you guys have expected, like, how much it will cost to replace when you're done putting the cot and everything else that you're in?
I, I haven't seen that number, no, what the cost to acquire was $39,000.
Just for the truck? Okay.
Just for the truck, however, just for the truck is
Not having it.
By far the biggest part of the expense.
Sure, but not having it outfitted, just.
But it's not fully outfitted yet. But there, in terms of modifications to the actual truck, the cot is loadable. You don't have to modify the truck. It's, all of these trucks had cots in them. One time, the various departments or whatever generally do save the cot and put it on their next such vehicle. So, that's why the cot is not in the truck. But in terms of, I mean, I looked at the truck, all of the, I think there's, there's even like a refrigerator in there for medicines. There's all of the racks and shelves, and all that stuff is already there.
Oh, okay, good.
So, I mean, that's what it was used for.
Okay, good. I'm just curious, thank you.
And any other questions for Dan?
They even saved money on, because the truck was white, all white. Fire trucks are now white, not here, they aren't, they're red.
Right.
You could paint that truck, and it costs about $15,000 to paint it. They had it wrapped, vinyl wrap.
Oh, that's cheaper.
For eight.
Yeah.
A fraction.
Right.
I mean, a small, small fraction, and it's beautiful, so.
Good, any other questions for Dan? All right, thank you, Dan, appreciate it. Next up, Interurban Board, Gregory?
We are still on the search for our next Phyllis, and so they'll be, they're still interviewing. We should probably hear something in the next week or two about that. Phyllis just received an award from Douglas, a Award of Recognition, and then she's also receiving one from the township as well. And as I spoke about in the workshop, I know we're working towards also giving her a plaque of recognition for serving as well. So, she is, she is not retiring quietly. She has served us very well, and she'll still be sticking around with us probably through maybe about June. She'll be working with our new director for their first couple of months, so.
Good.
And also, yeah, just a reminder that we are open till seven now every night, every day of the week, and we'll be extending, stretching out our hours during the summer. I'll repeat again, from Memorial to Labor Day on Friday and Saturdays, we'll be open until 11, so.
Nice, all right, Gregory, thank you. Anyone have any questions for Gregory? All right, moving on to Cal Lake Sewer and Water Authority, is Barry here? I know he had, okay. As far as Cal Lake Harbor Authority, our next meeting is April 9th. zoning Board of Appeals, no one is here, I don't believe.
They meet on Thursday.
They meet on Thursday. All right, Historic District, Russ is not here, so we'll move on from that. Planning Commission?
Next meeting is March 21st.
March 21st. And PPW?
Next meeting is Friday.
All right, look at all these upcoming meetings, you guys. And then Tri-Community Non-Motorized Trail, Scott?
Nothing to report, but looking forward to new business, Item 15E.
Okay, all right. Moving on, request for payment none. On to Item Number 12, Approval of Accounts Payable. If I could have a motion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve accounts payable in the amount of $160,617.34.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, this is a roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, no introduction of ordinances, no unfinished business, on to new business. Item 15A, Short-Term Rental Enforcement Plan, this is on page 35 in the packet. Ryan Cummings.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Covered this pretty extensively at your workshop meeting and kind of went through it piece by piece with you. So, just the very high level, you know, your short-term rental task force recommended a variety of different ways to enforce, better enforce your short-term rental regulations, especially the recommendations that they had made. The recommendations included, you know, looking at a third party, looking at fees, fine amounts, dedicated code enforcement officer, you know, looking at modifying, you know, signage in no-parking areas for better public safety vehicle access. So, the plan that's before you tonight, I think, hits all those, those boxes and recommendations. There's multiple tools being used, you know, city staff continuing to utilize and work with the Fire Department, that partnership we have with them doing inspections, you know, the Sheriff's Office for more immediate noise issues and other disturbance or concerns, doing some very part-time contracted code enforcements, eight hours a week during the kind of the busier peak season months, and then hiring a third-party provider to assist with address identification and offering a 24/7 hotline. So, multi-pronged, both proactive measures and complaint-based measures. I think this really is a plan that eases us into further code enforcement. It doesn't take us directly to a full-time dedicated code enforcement officer. In fact, I think it's, you know, I think we're dipping our toes into the code enforcement side, and we're going to have to adjust and evaluate as we go, whether it's sufficient, you know, and whether it needs to be backed off, you know, those sorts of things. But I think this is an incremental approach to what was recommended by the task force.
Okay, do I have a motion at this time?
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to approve the short-term rental enforcement plan.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I just think it's worth noting that we've had a fairly robust discussion on all of these new business items on Wednesday. So, if people are wondering why there's not a lot of discussion, most of this we covered, but I'm open, go ahead.
I will say, I understand the fees are a little bit more, but I want to thank you, Ryan Cummings, for putting that together, so that we're really understanding that these fees are covering all the services, and probably not all of them, we're kind of discovering. So, I think that's, I think that's fair. I know it's going to be steep for some folks that aren't expecting it, but, but, but I see how it's, it's justified. And, um, and just like our, our, unfortunately, our groceries, uh, grocery prices are going up and everything else is going up. Um. It was time to have this review. Um, it might hurt a little bit, but I think down the road, we'll thank ourselves for finally adjusting these fees to where they should be. So that, um, so that they're paying for the, but they're, they're paying for everything that we have to pay for. We're not putting, uh, the burden on our taxpayers, uh, for, for short-term rentals. Um, so yeah, I, I can support this.
Yeah, and the enforcement plan is, you know, the first step in what we're trying to accomplish here. We spent a summer working with the short-term rental task force. Um, and all of these came from those recommendations and through the planning commission, and there was a lot of work that was put into all of this. So. Any other discussion?
No, I mean, the, I think Dan Fox has said many times that we need to capture our cost as did the, the task force, um, and many others. So I think across the. Spectrum of folks in the communities, this is, um, a wanted change. So.
And I would, I would add to that too, is that obviously, you know, we, we seek to capture the cost. I brought it up in the, um. Uh, workshop and no need to belabor the point, but it only captures some direct costs. So. All of our indirect costs are not there and there's a lot of indirect costs. Uh, we, we don't have any costing for the clerk answering questions about how come I can't park anywhere and, and things like that. So. Uh, to be, to be clear, this only captures direct costs. Um, the, the fees, while they may be higher than what they're used to being paid, we've just been woefully, um, ignorant in the past, not ignorant, but, uh. Uh, not willing to make those changes. So.
All right. So as far as the enforcement plan, uh, we do have a motion and a second, and this is a roll call vote.
Anderson.
Yes.
Baldwin.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Muncy.
Yes.
Stanton.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to item fifteen B, the Granicus proposal for third-party short-term rental enforcement support. Ryan. This is on page forty of your packet.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, uh, as I indicated at your, your workshop meeting, the, the city issued a request for proposals. Uh, for some short-term rental enforcement, uh, support, uh, from some providers who, uh, essentially kind of, uh, aggregate data and, uh. Scan the internet for short-term rental listings and gather everything from maximum occupancy to number of stays. Uh, looking to make sure that they're, they're actually renting them in accordance with the regulations. There's a variety of different tools that they have. Um, so we asked for, uh, some support along, um, those lines. And then we also asked for, uh, some possible support of offering a twenty-four-seven hotline that would take. Uh, you know, non-emergency complaints, um, from, uh, members of the community and then, uh, communicate those complaints to the, the, the short-term rental representatives to, to, to arrest them. And then they would. Capture that information real time, uh, kind of create a log of, uh, the complaints, gather the evidence, uh, communicate with the agent and then kind of, uh, log the outcome. So. Um, there's a number of firms that provide these types of services. Uh, three of them that were reaching out to us on a regular basis throughout the, the short-term rental task force process. I, I. Issued that request for proposal and did send a copy of it to the firms that were showing interest initially. We also posted on our website. Uh, two, uh, came back with proposals, Granicus and Avenue. They both, um. Are, uh, capable of providing the, the necessary services. Granicus came in with a lower price. They weren't going to charge us for one time upfront fees and they were also a little bit cheaper per year. Uh, with the, the combined services as well. And Granicus is also, uh, willing to, um, offer the, the services. Um, for a three-year period with five percent increase next year and five percent the following year. And, and as you can see of my report, they, they, uh, are a partner in a number of communities doing very, very similar work. Um, so my recommendation is that you, uh, consider approving Granicus to help support your short-term rental plan that you just approved.
All right, is there a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with Granicus for their address identification and twenty-four-seven hotline solution. In the prorated amount of two thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty cents for April thirty to June thirty, twenty twenty-four. Seventeen thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-one cents for full year one. Eighteen thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents for year two. And nineteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety cents for year three.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion?
Well, I feel like we went over this at length at Wednesday's workshop and totally comfortable with every, all the information that. Our acting city manager and, uh, planning and zoning directors provided.
All right, anyone else?
We discussed this in, in our workshop and I think this is a great tool, um, for us. Uh, it'll, it'll be, uh, quicker, more proactive when it comes to. Uh, folks that, uh, do call and have any complaints with STRs. So. And, and, and the other services that we, that they provide. I think it's a good value for the money. And, um, and I see how you've incorporated it into the fees.
Excellent. Anything else? All right, this is a roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Baldwin.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Muncy.
Yes.
Stanton.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Excellent. Onto fifteen C, uh, resolution two four zero three one one C, short-term rental fees. This is on page ninety-seven of your packet.
All right, thank you.
Ryan, once again.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I forgot to show you. I was going to show you how we were doing, um, the, the same work that Granicus was doing before, just to. If you guys want to look at it after we're done, but we basically previously had a, a staff member who had to search websites, try to find what address the listing was for, because they don't, they don't show the, the addresses on sites and then. Uh, cross-reference things to try to determine if they were actually licensed or not. And so, um, we're able to do this work much more efficiently, I think, going forward with, with Granicus's service. So. If you want to take a look at that, um, I certainly can.
Yeah.
Um, so the, the third, uh, piece here that you're looking at is, are the, the short-term rental, uh, fees. Uh, back in the, the fall, I had a discussion with you as a council about, um. Uh, you know, moving forward with developing a short-term rental enforcement plan and get, captured some initial feedback from all of you. And one thing that I think all of you were, were pretty clear on is that you wanted, um. Uh, you know, a full evaluation of what those costs were and a recommendation that, that included those, those costs, including, uh, you, you all mentioned, um. A couple of different times, the, and the model of legal fees that were spent on the sh- short-term rental task force process and updating your regulations and, and that sort of thing. So. Um, the, the fee that's proposed, that's before you, um. I provided you with a breakdown, kind of showing, you know, where, where, what, where those costs are, where those, those direct costs are. There, there are right costs that, that aren't included in here. I. I, I think, um, you know, that, that, that is certainly something that you could consider as well if you desired, but. Uh, really, it, it captures, you know, the fire department inspection fee, which is going up fifty dollars, uh, per year, uh, here soon. They, they recently did a very similar evaluation of their costs. So some of that cost is, is fire department, you know, increase. Um, uh, the staff time spent on, uh, processing and reviewing applications, answering inquiries and pro, you know, issuing licenses. Uh, the staff time, uh, uh, on enforcement, which, you know, even this five hours per week, you know, throughout the years is, you know. May prove to be light, but you know, giving the benefit to the, the short-term rental, uh, uh, license holders. Uh, again, we'll have to keep evaluating these, um, contractual code enforcement, eight hours per week. We're thirty-two weeks out of the year. It's not for the full year, but it's kind of during those months as we're gearing up and then kind of winding down the amount of hours that, um, uh, and, and working with this new software and staff time, working with this software and, and following up on unlicensed rentals and, and, and complaints that need follow-up. Um, the Granicus cost that you just improved is, is incorporated in here. Uh, and then. Uh, you know, work with our legal counsel to take a look at, you know, what are we averaging per, per week on, on just enforcement-related issues? Uh, and then taking a look at what those costs were related to the short-term rental task force and spreading that, that out over time. And so that, that equates to five hundred and twenty-five dollars, uh, annually. Uh, so that's, that's my recommendation. Um, it's a policy decision if you want to do something otherwise.
All right, do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Motion to approve resolution number two four zero three one one dash C, approving a change in the city's schedule of fees for short-term rentals.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I know I, um, I had a chance to talk with Ryan about this and going through how he came up with some of the fee structures. And, um, and thankfully, there's a lot of other communities doing the same type of work that we're doing. And he was, uh, impressed that some of his numbers were exactly, uh, even with some of our other surrounding communities that just came out with their numbers. So, um. He had already, you know, felt pretty good about, uh, what that looked like. Um, you can go into a little bit more detail about that.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, and that, that was kind of a, a long more like the, the, you know, the, the fine side of things and you're going to see that in a couple of weeks. Um, but I, I do think that. Each community obviously has to set fees at, at whatever its costs are, but I, I think, you know, I mean, the, the fees do, you know, in, in different communities, they, they do vary, right? Some are maybe around two or three hundred dollars and. You know, South Haven has six hundred dollars and they, they do, in the case of South Haven, they have a couple of different license types. Uh, business licenses and personal licenses, but they've established two different license types and we haven't done that in this, this case here. So.
Yeah, I mean, and he's got a great breakdown of, you know, what it, what it costs the city. Um, and we're giving a little grace, obviously. Um, but I, I think there's, uh, thorough work being done as far as trying to gather, uh, the amount of, you know, dollars that we're spending, working through all of the short-term rentals. So. Anyone else?
Appreciate the, uh, the work that went into this. This is something I remember very clearly, all of us identifying as a priority as we were looking to evaluate the short-term rental fees. I understand the, um, discomfort a little bit with, you know, having to. Pay for enforcement when you don't break any rules. I know there's a lot of good short-term rental owners out there. We live in a society type thing, you know, it's, it's part of, part of how we, how we do things. So, um, appreciate the work that went into this.
All right, anyone else? All right, it's a roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Baldwin.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Muncy.
Yes.
Stanton.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to item number fifteen D, supportive short-term rental house bill five four three eight. It's on page one oh three of your packet. And Ryan, if you could help us out with this as well.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. As we discussed last week, your. Your state representative, Joey Andrews, has been working on a short-term rental bill for some time. He's gathered. Different stakeholder feedback. And I, I always talk a lot of different types of stakeholders as well, um, from, to gather a lot of different perspectives on this. Um, he's put forth his bill in the state legislature and his, his staff has reached out, uh, wondering, uh, if, you know, different, uh, folks would, uh, be supportive of his bill. And so. If you wish to speak, uh, as a, as a council, as a body, uh, you could do that via resolution. Um, uh, you can choose to approve the, the, the resolution that's before you. You could choose to amend it if there's certain things in it that you don't like, or you could choose as a body to take no action at all and choose on an individual basis to submit some sort of letter, uh, in support. So it's totally up to you. I'll leave it there.
All right, do I have a motion?
Mayor. Motion to adapt resolution number two four zero three one one dash A, supporting HB five four three eight. And its proposed statewide excise tax, comprehensive registry and local zoning regulations for short-term rentals.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mayor, um, I just wanted to, uh, if you'll bear with me here, I want to make sure I got everything down right. So I said it right. Um, on Tuesday afternoon, March fifth, we reserved that, we received the packet for Wednesday, March sixth, uh, four P M workshop. And. Though I briefed through the agenda, I didn't read the entirety of H R five four three eight dash two thousand twenty-four. At our workshop, I expressed that as well, as, as well as a desire to reach out to those that this bill would directly impact. After our discussion on it last Wednesday. I expressed that it had a lot of great things in it and that I was about seventy-five percent sure of voting yes on to supporting this bill. Over the week and the weekend, I've had the chance to read the bill several times and talked to several rental property companies. As well as residents and lease a mies at the C V V. I've discovered that businesses that this would affect the most are not in favor in supporting it. I then asked myself, what would anyone benefit from whether we sent a letter of either support or against the bill? So I really failed to really see a benefit. This is going to the state and it may or may not get passed, whether we give it a blessing or not. Uh, what I do see is an overall, uh, overkill of regulation, including the requirement of a fire extinguisher in every bedroom. As opposed to every floor. I see more paperwork for our staff, for our S T R owners and companies, and basically more red tape. With a six percent state tax, a five percent hospitality tax from the C V V and this newly proposed six percent tax. It'll equal to an additional seventeen percent tax for folks renting a home. This new tax does not apply to resorts, hotels, motels. It's strictly aimed at short-term rental homes. So that means like if I get a really cheap one-night stay at a very small unit for about three hundred dollars, that's about the going price around here. That price has changed from three thirty-three to now three fifty-one. And that doesn't sound like a whole lot. When I go to. When I go to Chicago, I have that extra tax and to me for that one night or two, that's not a whole lot. But. I know a lot of our rentals are week-long rentals. Folks rent them for a week long. In fact, a lot of, a lot of rentals are only week-long. And when you look at that number, you know, you look at the lowest, lowest end of a weekly rental, you're looking at around three thousand a week. And that, that tax, uh, adds up with the seventeen percent, uh, adds up to over five hundred dollars more, uh, just for taxes. It used to be. Um, uh, three hundred, three hundred and thirty more. And that's what it is now. Again, um, but. Houses are close to around here. We've got a lot of nicer houses. They're up at around six thousand a week, seven thousand, even some of them are more. And so when you get up to the six thousand dollar mark, then you're spending over a thousand dollars on taxes. And I wonder what the consumer thinks about that. Um, the, this bill states that property owners can either pass this tax on to the renter, or they can absorb it into the cost of their operations. Well. Already their cost of operations are taking a sharp hike with the passing of what we just passed, two four zero three one one dash C. Our short-term rental fees by the city of Sagatuck. So most aspects of the bill make sense. I'm on board with them. But they are mostly what we are doing anyway to regulate our S T Rs here in our city. A key factor in this bill is additional taxes. While adding an additional layer of regulation through the state, it would also bring in one percent for their admin costs. And five percent for us, for the city of Sagatuck. I, I'm sure our intentions are to be fiscally responsible, you know, of course, with any money that we receive. Uh, that there are several bills that are attached to this bill as well. Uh, and that won't pass unless these other bills pass, of course. And I don't know if all of them. All of us has, have, have taken the time to read every single one of those bills and everything that's in them. Correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, I know I spent a lot of time reading this bill, but I, and a couple of other bills, but I didn't get through all of them. Um, and it's because of these things and basically because of my community outreach as well. Um, I can't support a letter of support for this bill.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Holly.
Um, this is not a seventeen percent tax. It's a six percent tax and it's adding parity to the short-term rentals right now that are not paying resort taxes that are. Um, uh, bed and breakfast and hotels would have to pay. So this is just about fairness and parity and about getting something back to the community. That is hosting these short-term rentals. I am absolutely in favor of this.
Mm-hmm. And again, uh, this is not a seventeen percent tax. What I'm saying is that the overall tax that they would be paying on top of their taxes. This is a six percent tax, but when added to your six percent state tax and five percent C V V tax. Or, uh, hospitality tax, that does add up to a full amount of seventeen percent in taxes that they'll be paying.
I believe the C V V is an assessment, not a tax.
A tax, thank you, yeah.
Go ahead, Holly.
And that doesn't come back to us.
Yeah. So the difference between, just so everyone's clear, the difference between the C V V's assessment that goes to certain short-term rentals, it's for anybody that has ten or more rentals.
Right.
And then those who choose to pay the assessment, because some people do, if they have maybe three or four. Um, the assessment goes to marketing our area. Um, the tax that would be put on, it would be an excise tax. And the five percent that would come back to our area, we could use on anything, you know, that we need in our area that could help with. The tourists, whether that's helping our beaches, whether it's helping, um, you know, Mount Bald Head, all those things that our tourists use. And the ten thousand people that come here use, the fire department, our, um, you know, law enforcement, all of that. That percentage comes back to us with a big pot of money that we don't typically have. Um, so there's a big difference between what the assessment does for the C V V, which helps market our area, and then money that could actually go to the municipality. Um, we don't see a lot of that money. Um, you know, oftentimes, you know, like. A lot of our dollars go to the state, but they don't come back locally. And this would be one way that we could capture some of that.
Uh, also, I think it's wonderful that it, uh, promotes local control. So the two things is that we would get, um, something back, the residents would get something back to promote our, our parks and, and things that, that we have. And we have to take care of those things and, and have them wonderful and beautiful for our tourists and our, and our, uh, public works. And then, uh. To, to also to retain local control and not have this be, um, out for the entire state. So absolutely in favor of it.
Okay, go ahead, Greg.
We are, we currently do have local control and, and, uh, uh, it's probably certainly not as much as getting five percent for the state, but I will say the C V V does contribute. Uh, to events and, uh, and things, uh, for our.
It's like ten thousand dollars here and there. It's not anywhere.
It's more than a thousand here or there.
It's a ten thousand here and there.
Okay, anyone else?
I'm ready to vote.
All right, it's a roll call vote.
Anderson.
Yes.
Baldwin.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Muncy.
No.
Stanton.
Yes.
White.
I abstain.
I don't think.
Your name gets recorded with the yays.
Uh. You can't abstain?
Why can't?
I thought, I thought under our charter, unless you had a conflict.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, if you wouldn't mind coming up.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I just want to make sure we're following the charter. And I thought it was either present.
We can.
Or no, I just, I don't think present was an option. I'm sorry, I don't mean to. Yeah. I thought it was.
Kyle, if you wouldn't mind.
Was the.
Yeah. It's okay. It's all right if we just get the answer beforehand and that way we feel good about it. It's okay.
I just don't want us to create a habit where, you know.
Yeah, that's okay.
If it's not a conflict.
The standard is addressed in section.
The standard is addressed in section, city code four point one nine, except as provided in the charter, no resolution shall be adopted or passed by from a vote. Councilperson voting and no.
You vote with the party that wins, like in the record. That's how it is.
Uh, I would just ask the council, look at the charter. I just, I just want to make sure, yeah, I just want to make sure we're not creating a precedent.
It's okay if we find out. I'm okay with it.
So we, rules of procedure. I'll read your rules of procedure as far as duty to vote if you'd like, Mr. O'Meara.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was pulling that up. Yeah, so it's on paragraph five of page six of your rules for procedure. And it states that a council member who is present and abstains, does not repose, shall, shall be counted as voting with the prevailing side and shall be recorded unless otherwise excused.
So you're voting with the failing side?
Prevailing side.
Prevailing side, sorry.
What is, oh, prevailing.
Okay, okay.
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 Sorry.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that.
Sorry, appreciate that point of order. Thank you.
All right, so, uh, Jamie, you are at, so the motion carries?
Motion carries.
All right, all right. Thank you so much. All right, we are on to, let's see, um, item number fifteen E, um, the D N R trust fund grant, Blue Star Trail, page one oh six.
Thank you, Ma- Madam Mayor. Um, so several months ago, uh, the city, uh, uh, passed a resolution, uh, indicating, hey, you wanted to apply for, uh, Michigan D N R trust fund grant, uh, for the Blue Star Trail. Uh, and you were successful with that, that grant. So before you is, uh, the actual grant agreement, uh, that, that needs a resolution of, of your approval and we'll sign off and then get everything, uh, uploaded to the, uh, the state system there. So.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve. Whoa, shoot, I just lost my page number. I can't read that. I can make the motion. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, motion to approve resolution number two, four, zero, three, one, one, dash, B, approving the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Development Project Agreement for the Blue Star Non-Motorized Trail.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, do I have any discussion? Nope. All right, it's a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, on to item number fifteen F, City Manager Search Proposal. This is on page one nineteen of your packet. And, uh, you know, effective February twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, the city council accepted the resignation of our city manager. Um, council per the charter shall appoint a manager within one hundred twenty days after the vacancy and may also appoint an acting city manager in the interim, which we have done. Um, the hiring options have been reviewed with legal counsel. Um, and just to update that, um, at the workshop, Jacob Witty, our legal counsel, advised that no competitive bids were needed because of the kind of consulting work that was, um, being done. So they advised us that we didn't have to get competitive bids. And we did get a, um, proposal from Walsh Municipal Services, which we've used in the past. Um, he did update it because after our discussion on Wednesday, we wanted a larger search, um, to take more time. Um, and so you see the sample motion there. I believe Frank Walsh is on the line right now, but if we could have a sample, uh, have a motion at this time.
Mayor, I move to approve the hiring of Walsh Municipal Services in the hiring process of city manager in the amount not to exceed ninety-eight hundred dollars.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Uh, Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Gregory.
Um, and thank you, thank you, council, uh, for, uh, for, you know, letting us know that we didn't have to have more than one choice. Um, you know, that it wasn't legal or, you know, legal or not legal. I don't think the council is ready to hire a firm to seek out a city manager without having a thoughtful review, discussion, and update to job requirements with ourselves first that best suits our needs. According to our city charter, we have a hundred and twenty days, four months to fill this position. And we owe it to our citizens to take as much time as needed. About a year ago, Traverse City encountered the same dilemma. The city manager left his position with an amicable break and the city council took the time to choose from twelve search firms before selecting one that they felt best served their unique needs. Rates for these services varied between eleven thousand mark and up to the sixty thousand price point. Of course, we want to be mindful of our budget, but we also should make sure we are getting this right. Nothing against the professionalism of Walsh Municipal Services, as we have used their services many times over the last few years. And if Ryan Cummings is an example of the talent from their findings, it's proof enough that they are capable of producing good candidates. However, I think we owe it to ourselves and to our city to broaden our choices in deciding how we go forward on what we want and how we go about selecting the best person for Sagatuck. Therefore, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table this until further discussion with council to review, discuss, and update job requirements, as well as allowing us the time to discuss the possibility of interviewing more search firms and/or tools that are available to us.
Well.
I appreciate that.
I'll make a point of order.
Because we already have a motion on the floor, so we can vote on that and then see where it goes from there. But just, go ahead, Ryan.
If you have a second, Madam Mayor.
Yeah. Oh, we had a second, didn't we?
We did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, you did. There, there, just the point of order is there is a motion on the table, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just for a point of order, yep.
Yeah.
You can, a motion to table is a secondary motion that I think you can do inside of a first motion. You do have to state when you're tabling it until.
So right now we have a motion on the table and a second. And I don't think, I mean, you can have a motion, but we have to vote on this one first.
There's a certainty, a secondary motion is a motion that occurs inside another motion.
Uh, that's if the original motion would like to accept that, um, alteration.
Oh.
Is it not for council?
And you can certainly chime in on this if you choose to, Kyle. Just to say whether or not.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I kind of understood that I could table it.
It's because the motion is concerned. Could you address the motion aspect of it?
You need a second to table.
And then we would need a second to table it?
If, if, if that's, if that's correct.
But I believe the motion is there and there is a second on the motion as it stands.
So your
We would have.
Council procedures requires either follow Robert's rules and order. We can check, although typically if a motion does not have a second, there is, you essentially do not perform.
But we did have a second, though, on the original.
No, but I, I was, I was talking about the second motion.
Okay.
So my recommendation is you would begin with the first motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any more discussion on the first motion as it stands?
And once again, we, you know, Mayor, we, we discussed this at length on Wednesday. The only substantive change was consensus among the council to, um, extend the search period from two weeks to four weeks, hence the change in the, uh, the amount that is there in the motion. So I'm prepared to vote.
Um, and I can speak further, but go ahead, Holly.
Yeah, I, so I, I appreciate your perspective, Gregory. Um, we're searching for a pretty, um, narrow job. I mean, you know, there are, I mean, the candidate pool is, well, I guess for everything is finite, but, um, whether it's Walsh or another firm, th- th- sort of how searches are conducted now, we're going to reach, you know, I think virtually the identical population regardless of which firm fields that search. So the question is, um, you know, do we have confidence in, in, um, you know, Mr. Walsh's and his firm's ability to screen those candidates and present them? I mean, I think we've had enough experience with him that he has provided us good candidate pools. And again, I, I feel like we will, based on his proposal, have enough candidates that I'm confident we'll get good folks. In terms of the job description, and I know, um, somebody raised this earlier. Um, I think, I mean, we do definitely need to look at the position description and also look at the questions we're going to be asking and sort of the qualities we're looking for. I think we can do that in parallel with getting the search started. Um, you know, again, there are, you know, people who are looking for city manager jobs, either city managers wanting to make a change or somebody close to city manager wanting to land that first gig. And so they're looking. Um, and I don't think, um, tweaking the job description is going to really materially, if even close to materially, affect who's going to apply. They're going to see city manager Sagatuck, Michigan and say, wow, awesome. Um, I want to, I want to move there and have that job. So, um, I appreciate the perspective, but I'm, I'm confident going with Walsh, um, in the process and with, you know, how we're lining it up.
Yeah, and I feel like we, you know, we talked about this at length at the workshop. We did expand it. Um, you know, it looks like the way this looks, it's more like mid-May by the time we would have a new city manager and a contract approved by city council. Um, you know, uh, Frank Walsh is on the line. Frank, if there was, you know, say we didn't have a great pool, we didn't have a lot of numbers, would you, um, come back to council and say, I'm just not getting, you know, that many applicants. Can I expand this at all? And then if we had to approve an expansion of some sort with additional dollars, is that something you've done in the past?
Uh, typically not. We usually don't get to that point. Um, usually we're pretty successful at the end of the process. There has been, uh, maybe two searches in the last two years that we've had to extend the deadline on, but it's not two out of thirty-five, maybe. Uh, it's not common. Um, one other thing I wanted to point out, if I might, uh, Mayor, um, is the, um, community profile um, does need some work and I'm working with, uh, interim, uh, manager Cummings. Like for instance, the opportunity page, opportunity and challenge page, that needs to be updated and we're working on that. And before the pro, we're also gonna, we've, um, updated, um, the way in which we do profiles. I think they look a lot better, um, than they did a few years ago. And so we'll be actually, um, spending a lot of time changing over the profile to, I think, a more professional look. And there is, uh, there are some upgrades that need to, uh, enhancements that need to happen to the existing profile. So that's one thing. Uh, we hope to go live on Friday, uh, this coming up Friday, but uh, that will depend upon the amount of work that we get done, um, between now and then. Um, and then the other thing, um, and, uh, I also, I understand all the points that have been made and I've listened to very carefully. The one thing I will tell you, the last thing a person, a candidate does, uh, this may surprise you, but the last thing they'll do is look at the job description. Because most people know what a city manager does. I also believe that, um, while it's true that this city council may be looking for maybe a little bit, maybe they have a perspective that's a little different than three years ago. So one of the things we can do, and I, I don't, not sure who the council member was, it just spoke, but she spoke about how we can, uh, integrate that into the questions. That's a really good point. When we get down to, uh, putting together the questions, which will be probably six weeks away, seven weeks away, we will make sure that there, uh, we take the, uh, any concerns that the council has about what kind of candidate they're looking for, and we'll engrain that into the, into the questions before we go forward. The only other piece of information I would need from you, uh, before we move, if, if we move forward, and if we do, um, in the, there's one definite thing you have to have when you go out and you put the profile out. You do not want to put salary depending on qualifications. People might come in and think they're going to make a hundred and thirty-five, hundred and fifty thousand dollars at this job. And so we don't want candidates applying not knowing what the salary base, uh, level will be. I've done a little bit of research and, um, I, I would recommend that we offer, um, the position based on how tough the recruitment environment is right now, at about one hundred to one oh five would be my recommendation. That we would need to know from the council before we can move forward.
All right, any other questions? Go ahead.
And, and again, uh, Frank, again, I, I'll repeat, you know, I, it has nothing to do with your services. I think you provided great services. Again, Ryan Cummings is a great example of that. Um, I, I'm not, I, I know that you've worked for our city before. Um, but this is my second year on council. I know we've got a couple folks. It's their first year on council, so I don't know how familiar they are with your services as well. Other than that you have, uh, that you have worked for the city and maybe, maybe they've heard from some opinions here or there. Um, it was just, uh, just, uh, I think we should slow down and take our time and not make it such a rush thing. When we first introduced, when this was first introduced at the workshop, it was introduced as your quick version, which was a two-week version. And I'm happy that we did extend it to a four-week version. Just want to be very careful and take our time and just make sure we're not making a quick decision.
Yeah. Yeah, Mayor, I, I.
Okay, go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I hear what you're saying, Councilman. Um, you know, Mr. Walsh is, I think, uniquely placed, uh, to serve Sagatuck in this regard. Um, yeah, you mentioned you're new. I mean, uh, Mr. Walsh was brought in by, uh, Mayor Becken and Mayor Protem Lewis to conduct a, a search for us.
Started under Truster, actually, but.
Under Truster.
Yeah.
Yeah, under, under Mayor Truster. And, uh, so I think he is very uniquely, um, placed to, to understand the needs of this community and, um, you know, I think he's served as well. So, um, I, I'm prepared to vote on this.
Okay. Um, yeah, and I had an opportunity to work with, uh, once I was on council back in twenty twenty. Um, got on council in November and we went through the extensive search. He was very, Frank was fantastic. Um, called each of us individually, had like one-on-one chats with him. Um, and then, you know, provided us with a lot of information going into the interview process. And it was just a really smooth process. I think we would all agree. And if you would ask any of the, uh, previous council members that were a part of that process, um, you would understand why we would like to continue with, um, Wa- Walsh Municipal Services. So, um, at this time, we do have a motion on the table and a second. Um, if the clerk could please call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Muncy?
No.
Stanton?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. All right, we are on to, um, item fifteen G, additional compensation for interim city manager. This is on page one thirty-five in your packet.
Mayor.
Uh, yes.
Motion to approve stipend for interim city manager Ryan Cummins in the amount of one thousand dollars per week in addition to his regular salary until a permanent city manager is in place.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, uh, any discussion on this?
I just, I have to say, I mean, Ryan's doing this job. He's doing a great job. Once again, thank you, Frank Walsh, for finding him. Um, he's doing two jobs right now, uh, in a very, very kind of dynamic environment in our city. A lot is going on. As you can see by the attendance of our meetings as of late, um, it's a high-pressure job. And he's, based on what he's done for us around the short-term rental task force and planning, I think he, um, absolutely deserves, uh, this stipend while he is, uh, wearing these two hats.
So I just wanted to say a couple of things. Um, you know, when I was looking at whether, you know, this sort of thing has been done in the past and looking at, you know, whether stipends or what seems appropriate. Um, I got guidance from legal counsel that, you know, a stipend is appropriate in this type of situation. And I also went back from when we, um, hired an interim city manager previously. Um, so back in September of twenty twenty, I kind of went through some, um, you know, just some of the old articles when Kirk Harrier, uh, resigned back in the day. And we, um, ended up, uh, having an employment agreement with an interim city manager and she was paid two thousand dollars a week at that time. So I felt pretty comfortable that we, you know, that Ryan has agreed to take on this role. At that time, um, we didn't have somebody that wanted to step into both the city manager position and the planning and zoning, um, position. So we had to hire a separate interim city manager who came in, um, you know, having to get up to speed on a lot of things. Um, in the middle of what we're going through with short-term rentals, I feel like there was a lot for somebody else to get up to speed on. And, um, Ryan has said that he would be up for the challenge of taking on both roles. Um, this would be different than, uh, two thousand dollars a week for an interim person. Um, this would just be additional pay for Ryan to take on that, that job. And I feel comfortable with this. Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I would like to add to that, that, uh, I think one of the things that's overlooked a lot of times when you're, when you're seeking to hire somebody in an interim role or, or, uh, you know, an, another interim city manager is the amount of time it takes for training and acclamation and all of that. We don't have any of that here. And I think that, uh, we're getting a bargain.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I think it's common for other communities too, when a city manager leaves, um, to hire an interim, just to see them through, because it, it is unusual, especially in a small town, to have somebody who's able to, to fill that job. So.
Uh, as I mentioned at the workshop, I was more a fan of just, uh, you know, covering the gap between the existing salary, uh, for the city manager. Um, we've spent, this has been an expensive process for us to go through. Um, and just, it's tough. It's, uh, but I am, I'm compelled by that, uh, that additional context. So I, I appreciate that. And, um, uh, Ryan's obviously juggling a lot of plates with, with great, uh, great skill right now. And, uh, we're, we're lucky to have that. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Logan.
Yeah, and, and understanding the time and cost it would take to, if we were to hire someone and get them up to speed. It, it, just by the time they were up to speed, we'd be in May hiring a new manager. You know, I feel that, you know, um, so, you know, I, I'm compelled with that also. Um, you know, uh, the fact that, uh, you know, that he has to handle two jobs, um, I, I, I hated to put him on the point during the workshop, but I had to say, could you handle it, Ryan? Um, uh, uh, I put a lot of consideration into it because I am going in my head with numbers and I'm like, six hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred. Uh, does Scott? Does Scott get any money? Does, does the clerk get any extra money? Cause I know you did say that you're gonna, you're gonna rely heavily on your staff as well to help you get through it. But, but I think after putting more thought into it, I put a lot of thought into it today. I think that it's worth it.
Okay. All right. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, on to public comment. Anyone in the room like to get up to the podium? First and last name, where you live?
Third time's the charm.
Third time's the charm.
Uh, Dan Fox. Sorry, I had a suggestion for you in regards to the candidate search, born from my own personal business experience and what have you. I would suggest that for any, certainly any finalist, that you make it a requirement that said finalists consent to fairly direct background checks, third-party background checks, not through the consulting firm, separate. For historical performance, for medical background, or financial. I mean, you're well within your rights to ask for the financial background and credit rating, so forth, FICO score, whatever that is. I think that's, it, it doesn't, none of those things sells anything all by themselves, but put together, they, they, they are a useful data point. So for what it's worth, I would suggest you, you make that requirement and add that requirement in the process. And it'd be, given some of the things I mentioned earlier that I've heard in town, those sorts of things would I think be appreciated by a lot of people. Adding confidence that you found the right person and a person you can trust and a person who's whatever, not going to disappoint and on whatever, whatever score beyond the job performance track. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else in the room?
Which is Williams, ten fifty Elizabeth Street. I'd like to second what Dan just said about proper vetting, including background checks for bankruptcies and financial matters. I come from Fortune one hundred and the federal government and it's important that people who are involved with finances need to have that background check clearance before they're filled in the role of many roles in this, in this office here. And I'm wondering with the, if the recruiter is used and a candidate is found internally, is there a fee still involved with that? Should the candidate be found internally? Should Ryan be selected to be the manager? Do we still have to pay the fee or not? Or is it an up, upfront fee? It'd be wondered to, be good to know if that's been negotiated into it. And, and the last thing is, you know, the things that were approved tonight are disappointing because they're not tax neutral as far as the rollout of the fees. It's three twenty-five, three fifty for the fees now, but the five twenty-five doesn't come full into effect for three years. So this is going to cost the city more money for this new third-party service that is ten thousand, ten thousand, nineteen thousand dollars a year. It won't be fully taxed, tax neutral for years. So it really needs to be known that this is an additional expense the city is incurring. So, you know, fuzzy math is not good math. And I hope the recruiter finds a good candidate, whether it's internally or somewhere else. But background checks need to be done so that we're not left with wreckage that could happen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the room? If you could state your name and where you live.
About Jolie and Addy, I live at seven twelve Aligan. My comments kind of fit into something that Dan had mentioned about the rumors swirling around the last city manager. There's basically two issues here. One story is that he resigned to go over greener pastures. And because it was common knowledge that for X number of months, he was looking for a certain position, that's feasible. The other feasible, the other story is that he was forced to resign. And I don't think anybody in this council is vindictive. So I assume there must have been, if that's the case, there must have been for cause. In either case, if, if somebody resigns for a better job and you can't follow for that, why are we paying him? And the other reason is if he was fired for cause, which is certainly feasible with some of the things that I witnessed, why are you paying him? I can understand the situation with honoring his medical, is if that's the case, there's some issues involved. And I don't want, I can understand you can also be open to a lawsuit, depending on how you handle these things. But those are the questions that I have. I don't see why that kind of money, which is six figures, is thrown, thrown around. Now, that would like an explanation on that. And the other thing is, when I was in, in business and I was hiring people, if you didn't get an effusive recommendation from somebody, that was a red flag. If you only got that, well, all we'll tell you is that he worked here before. That was a red flag. And then that would cause me and other people to dig in. And we usually got to the reason why we didn't get an effusive recommendation. So these are things I hope you'll all take into consideration.
Thank you, Joe. All right, anyone else in the room?
Lori Durham, seven forty-seven Water Street. I just want to go on the record that I'll be anxious to see how this council and your new hired company is going to keep track of complaints on short-term rentals. So what is a complaint? I would like to know that. So we could go Friday on Campbell Road. Someone called the office and said that there is a party going on and it's disturbing me and it's almost midnight. From the time the call came in, it's all documented, screenshots. From the time the call came in to Milpan Realty, to the time a Milpan representative was out at that property. And luckily, this will be new for us going forward, we will start recording the minute we hit the driveway. So from the minute we hit the driveway, person went to the door, there was absolutely no noise, there was no issues and there was no party. From the time the call came in to the time that the person went to the property, communicated with the people and pulled away, it was seven minutes. So when you're hiring this company, I'm going to be very eager to watch and see what are the complaints? How many minutes till they were there? Was it legit? Because in this case, we're going to start a log now on where are they coming from and is it legit? Because what I don't want to see from this task force and the people who do not want any short-term rentals that used to rent short-term rentals, what I don't want to see is false information. So that was a false information. It was recorded, it's proven. So I'm hoping that you're all going to have some sort of a bulletproof factual. Was it a party? Did it disturb someone? Was it loud? Or was it, I just don't like that my neighbors renting. I saw somebody checked in today, so let's go ahead and call and complain, which is what happened last week ago Friday.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the room?
Christian Kendall, ten fifty-five Elizabeth. I know we like to spend money up here, so I would like a check for ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars in my address. You can mail it to me, I will gladly accept it. I don't know if Ryan Heiss was fired with cause or not, but I know some members of this council were made aware of some issues that maybe Ryan had a reason to be with, fired with cause or at least made aware of, that you could have done something about and nothing was done. So maybe you should look back in previous things, maybe a year ago, and reconsider things that could have been done differently to protect the taxpayer. Cause it's really sad that maybe you settled because you worried about a lawsuit instead of looking at the community as a whole. It's really, really, really sad. I work really hard to pay my taxes, so please send a check my way. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, on to online, Gary Kemp. You have your hand raised. If you could state your name and where you live.
Yeah, Gary Kemp, ten twenty-two Holland Street. I just wanted to say, reiterate a few things. One, I'm, I'm glad that Granicus has been hired. I think that is a positive for the community and for what you're trying to do. Secondly, I still believe the fees are too high and punish those of us who run good operations. And I think you better really spend a lot of time making sure that you protect the people who have been making the contributions to the community and paying the extra taxes and all, if you want this program to be successful. Three, I want to thank Greg for doing a lot of research with those of us who are in the trenches and who are going to pay the prices for these things and, and pay all your salaries. And four, I hope that you're not creating.
That's funny.
I hope you're not creating what is typically the bureaucratic, over-regulated situation that we tend to find ourselves doing now in government as a whole, federal, state and local for our small community. I think it's very easy to do and very easy to get to where your, the program grows larger and larger, becomes more and more punitive and eventually it's impossible to get rid of. Also, I would like to say that, one more thing here, where to go. I think you are going to need to really watch what's going on with your tax revenues. As more and more of these SRT, STRs get tired of some of this stuff, they, and they are not able to make the kind of income returns and investments that create places where people want to stay. I think you are going to find that you're going to start losing SRTs, STRs. And when they go to citizen residents, your taxes base is going to be reduced by half if, if they declare exemptions, which they're going to do if they're living in the property or if possible. I have two little properties and I paid approximately ten grand to you guys because they're both rentals and I pay double taxes on them because I can't declare them as exemptions. If you lose twenty-five or thirty percent of your STRs, you better start looking for three quarters of a million dollars worth of extra revenue. Cause that's what it's going to cost you, probably. And so I would be very sensitive to that. And that's, that's basically it.
All right, Gary.
I'm eighty years old, I'm eighty years old, so you won't have to put up with me that much longer. But I do think it is worth your spending some time on and not rushing through some of these things.
Appreciate it so much, Gary. Thank you. Frank Walsh.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take up a quick opportunity to thank the council for their support. Look forward to working with you and interim manager Cummings. And just to talk briefly about the background check, we do have a third-party administrator investigator, retired internal affair director from the city of East Lansing who provides all of our background checks. And they cover criminal, civil, driving, credit, Michigan State Sexual Registry and a couple of other things. So we do have a comprehensive background check that is handled and provided to the city upon the selection of a candidate. So thank you, I look forward to working with you and we'll get this right.
All right, Frank, thanks so much. Anyone else with their hand raised? Okay. Jamie, do you see anyone else? Okay. We do have correspondence from Catherine Simon. On to council comments. Holly, would you like to go first?
Sure, just a couple of points of clarification. And actually I heard this before the meeting too. There is a misunderstanding that the non-Homestead taxes come to the city and they don't, they go to the state. So while, appreciate that a lot of people pay more taxes than those of us who Homestead here, we don't get that money. So the other thing is Laura, there's a, there is a provision in what we passed last time. If people make false reports, that's a violation and, and subject to a fine. And I was pleased that actually our director of planning and our legal team brought that. It was an augmentation to what the task force had talked about, but absolutely people shouldn't make false complaints and if they do, we should go after them for that, so.
Right, Helen?
Yeah, I'd like to, again, just to clear up some misinformation. I've had some personal attacks recently. To be clear, I'm not opposed to short-term rentals. I am pro-short-term rentals. I think that they offer a valuable service to our community. I think that we need to regulate them and I think that we need, just like anything else, we have to make sure that things are going about in the appropriate way. I'm, I think it's wonderful to have short-term rentals. I like tourists, I want them to come and visit us. I just don't think it needs to be prolific in every neighborhood. Thank you.
Scott?
Yeah, I also support short-term rentals. I rented my property. There are people here that rented my property when I, when I had a house in Holland. So I, I understand both sides of the issue. I think what this council has done today is historic because it is about listening to the voters of Sagatuck, listening to all sides. I, I set up the task force last year and, you know, I, I received a lot of criticism because the task force included residents and non-residents. But we wanted to hear from all sides and I think we did. And thanks to Lauren sitting on that task force, Holly sitting on that task force and our planning commissioners, I think we have taken a very deliberative, very balanced approach to this important issue. And once again, I don't think there's a, a single person in Sagatuck that says there should be no short-term rentals. I don't, I, I think that's a false narrative, honestly. I think what we do recognize as the community is, you know, there are people here that live here full-time, they vote here. I was elected by the people that live here, that, that vote here. So they are my top priority, my type, top priority are the people that voted for me. That's my job as an elected official. But none of them have said to me, they want all short-term rentals banned. I don't believe it either. So I think what we're on the path for is the same kind of balance that communities up and down the lake shore are seeking. You know, Sagatuck's not alone in this, hence the, the House bill that's, that's potentially going to move forward. This is an issue that's being dealt with throughout the state of Michigan and communities elsewhere in our country. So it's a national issue and I'm just proud of this council for tackling it. And apart from that, I'm really looking forward to the community getting back, getting together and building that playground.
Nice, thanks, Scott. Gregory?
Yeah, well, you know, I think taking criticism, I guess that comes with the territory with every council folk, no matter what city you're in. Not everybody's going to agree with you. A lot of people look at us a different way. Boy, do I take the criticism. I even take it while I'm at work at the flower shop, trying to, trying to work. I get residents that come in while I'm working and love to give me their peace of mind in such flowery work. But I think that's part of the territory and we need to realize that. I appreciate working with our council. You guys know that sometimes I go against the grain once in a while, but we still have civil conversations here. And, and I appreciate that. I appreciate that a lot. Also, before I forget, don't forget this Wednesday, create a succulentscape at Wick's Park Bar and Grill, where all materials will be provided from a glass terrarium, terrarium toolset, succulent potting mix, decorative rocks and embellishments this Wednesday, six to eight P M. We still have a couple of spots open. It's going to be a lot of fun. Gene Smizik and I from Back to the Future show will be helping everyone. Come on over, have some cocktails, have a good time. I'll talk about whatever you want while I'm there, if you want to see me.
Thank you, Gregory. Logan?
One thing I would like to talk about is Ryan's last name is Cummins.
Yes.
I heard, I heard a lot of Cummings tonight and I think it was several people and I think he deserves the respect of us knowing his last name. Something really exciting is happening. I don't know if you've noticed that they're building that new health facility on Blue Star Highway. That is awesome. I recently had my checkup with, with Dr. Myers and he was, he's all excited about it, as everyone should be. I'm hoping I can get him to come chat, chat with us a little bit about it because he's been up to some stuff with that, which is just really exciting. Yeah. Really, really cool there. I did want to make a note that about the, the fees for the false reporting too, thing for the short-term rentals. That's a, that's a serious thing and that's not something that people are going to be able to do for very long, I don't think. So I'm excited that we're seeing all of those updates that will correct that and give us some kind of tooth, teeth to, you know, kind of get into that. Also echo the comments and the concern for the comprehensive background check over, over potential next hire. That's extremely important. I think we, you know, all agree on that. I'm not an expert in background checks. I would, I will do some research and figure out, figure out what that looks like. Make sure everybody's really, really excited about, you know, the confidence that we're placing in that person. And then also a congratulations to the fire department on the new apparatus. When we were out there, when Holly and I were out there for our new council persons tour, that was something that was already on Chief Greg Janik's radar as a need for the community. And I wanted to underscore that is something that I'm concerned about. The. And I wanted to underscore that is something that I'm concerned about, the ambulance response time. And I know everybody's working on that. And that's going to give some additional flexibility to our staff, which is just huge. It's kind of terrifying to think that we're in a position sometimes where you can call nine-one-one and they say, sorry about it. So really, really proud of the fire department for, for eyeing that need and getting, getting a fix in there. I'm sorry about the circumstances under which it occurred, that accelerated the timeline there, but an important and, and good job to those guys.
Okay, all right. And at this time, could I have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion by Muncy, second by Baldwin. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.